Good evening and welcome. We respectfully acknowledge that the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is on the land and territories of indigenous peoples. Today, Arizona is home to 22 federally recognized tribes, with Tucson being home to the Ton Olom and the Pasquehaki people. Welcome to the Pima County Board of Supervisors Candidate Forum for District Two, which is being conducted by the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson. I'm Victor Bowleg, your moderator for this evening's event. Assisting me this evening from the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson are our timekeepers, Sue DiArmond, our question sorters, Linda McCabe, and Ann Nigren, and our question gatherer, Emily Ricketts, and also, yes, Sherri Springer. When you sat down this evening, you noticed you had a pencil and a three-by-five index card in your chair. If you have a question or questions for the candidates, please write them on the cards and raise your hand. Someone will come and get your card and give it to the sorters, who will pass it on to the moderator. We sort the questions to ensure that we do not repeat one that has already been asked, perhaps in some other form. There are two candidates with us tonight from District Two. We have a limited amount of time to question these candidates, so we'll be limited on the number of questions that get formally asked. I apologize upfront if we weren't able to get to your question. I need to explain a few things about our process. First, the candidates have agreed to abide by our rules and we ask the same for the audience. First, I ask you to mute your phones and put them away. Do not record audio or video, any or all of this forum. The League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is streaming and recording this event, and will have it posted on our website for viewing shortly after the event. Second, you'll notice Miss DiArmond will be raising signs. As you can see, you have the yellow with 15 seconds warning and a red stop sign. The signs being held up inform the speakers how much time they have left to speak. Should the candidates continue after the stop sign has been raised, I will interrupt the speaker. We want to ensure that everyone has an equal amount of time, an opportunity to answer each question without interruption. Third, each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves and their platform, and one and a half minutes to respond to a question. We will rotate who goes first with each question. Last, but very important, we ask the audience not to clap, yell, or create any noise during the forum. We may clap at the end of the forum. If you do insist on creating noise during the forum, you may be escorted out of the building, so please refrain from applauding or booing any candidate during the forum. Now let us begin the forum by each candidate having two minutes to tell us about themselves and why they are running for the office. We'll start with John Backer. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to come speak with you today. I'm really honored to be here. I came to Tucson July 4th, 1984, with the Air Force to serve as an aircraft electrician on the A-10 aircraft, and since then have spent 30 years in technology, including 10 years at IBM, solving complex problems. And in solving the problems I've solved throughout my life, it's began with listening, and that's a skill that I think is in very short supply today. The saying is, God gave us two ears and one mouth, therefore we should listen twice as much as we speak. I'm married to my wife, Robin, for 21 years. We have a blended family of five children, four adult daughters and an adult son, and have six grandchildren. I've also served as Planning and Zoning Commissioner in the town of Sarita for eight years, most recently as the chairman, served on the Pima County District Four Board of Adjustments, have a history of several volunteer service projects that I've worked on through the years, including Habitat, Junior Achievement, several sports teams, was also the Cub Master for Cub Scout Pack down in Green Valley. I'm running for this seat because I believe I have something unique, something to offer our community. I started serving our country as an 18-year-old airman in the Air Force, and after 30 years of experience, four college degrees, I want to leverage my history of community service, education, and work experience to help solve the problems of Pima County, and thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
Well, thank you all very much for this opportunity. It's great always to have these kinds of discussions, and I am, again, Matt Heinz. I'm a local physician at one of our major medical centers, and came to Southern Arizona, actually over 20 years ago now, to complete my medical training at the University of Arizona, and absolutely fell in love with this place just hours after I interviewed here, frankly. So decided to make my life here, and I've never regretted that at all. Public service is just kind of part of my being. It's what I do. It's part of my work for my patients, and I've served in other roles. I was a state legislator for four years, two terms in the State House up in Phoenix from 2009 to 2013. Learned quite a bit about how to work in a pretty partisan environment as a member of a super minority, and still able to get a few things done. I think it's helpful that I come from a very conservative background in terms of my family. I am the Democrat, so I think that, you know, the kitchen table discussions were always very interesting. So, you know, I think listening is incredibly important. I do that a lot with my patients, and I try to do that as much as I can with the constituents I serve. I ran unexpectedly. I did not actually think about running for this county spot at all. I'd run for Congress a couple of times and had served in the Obama administration for a couple of years during the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, so I have a lot of really interesting experience, but had decided, you know, I was kind of done with running. But then the pandemic happened, and I knew that I had to step up, and the county and the county health department and the county board of supervisors seemed like a really great place to do that, and I look forward to the ongoing discussion.
Thank you. We'll begin with our first question. The question is, what is your plan to keep all the public libraries open? What is your plan to keep all the public libraries open? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
Excellent question, and we are hearing, now that we have seen, you know, really what's happened in terms of some deferred maintenance and a lot of other issues affecting the public library system, we've been hearing quite a bit from my constituents in District Two and many across the county about their concern and what they want their library system to look like, and how incredibly essential the libraries are, not just for books, for access to the internet, for all sorts of educational opportunities and programs, for, I mean, heck, you can get your blood pressure checked here. So there's just a lot of things that our libraries do. We have seen, unfortunately, over the past several budget cycles, a decrease of, I believe, 16% in the library budget, and while there has not been a final decision made, there is a proposal on the table to dramatically reduce the main public library but not completely shutter it, and also a proposal to close three smaller branches. It is my hope that we can prevent that closure and maybe only affect one or two of the smaller branches. And again, an ongoing discussion. My staff and I have been fielding those questions and concerns from District Two and other parts of the county, and look forward to having that discussion ongoing, and then, of course, with my colleagues on the board, coming to a resolution that does whatever possible to preserve this amazing and incredibly important system for the residents of Pima County.
Thank you. John Backer.
That's a great question, and libraries as a child helped shape me into the person I am today. Access to books, you know, I was fortunate enough to have a set of encyclopedias back when we were kids. Some of us had those, probably many don't now with the internet and so forth, so fond memories with all that. But as we move forward, we recognize that the libraries of old are not the libraries of today. The libraries are turning into more community centers, for lack of a better way of putting it, because of all the different access you have through the libraries, and they're critically important to the communities that the libraries serve. The residents have been talking to the Library Commission and pleading the case for what they need and want in their libraries, and I think it's critically important because each individual library, maybe, you know, some are smaller, some are larger, some are in certain locations and others in other locations, of course, might not need all the same services. You might not need, you know, books to check out at all those facilities, but still allow digital access, maybe checking out of books and then having them delivered to your branch and so forth. But it really needs to be driven by the people, what they need, what they want for their specific case. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question, what is your top priority as a county supervisor? What is your top priority as a county supervisor? We'll begin with John Backer.
My top priority as a county supervisor, and I believe that it's the sacred responsibility of all levels of government, to provide for public safety. I think the government best serves us in those roles that we can't really do for ourselves very effectively. Public safety is one of those such roles. We've had a lot of problems with fentanyl, we've had problems with vandalism, retail theft, all those types of things. The homeless situation, although many of those people are homeless for a reason that is out of their control, some of those homeless encampments are having a negative impact on property values, on businesses, and on residences, so public safety is just critically important. I've spent my 30 years working in technology, the last 15 has been spent serving customers in law enforcement, providing them with systems to help them do their jobs, help the good guys catch more bad guys, and public safety is the number-one thing we need to provide for. In addition to that, I'll just add on, the county needs to provide for roads and infrastructure and parks and recreation. That's not all-encompassing, but that covers some really big items that we need to cover. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
So as I've learned more about what the county does, because I will admit I didn't know a lot when I was elected, it was kind of a new thing for me, different from the federal government, different from the state, I have been very impressed by how far-reaching it is. The Constitution and the statutes charge counties, county supervisors, with all kinds of things, economic development, it's really been remarkable, but public health, of course, as well. And I think top priority would be to be aligning our budgets, and remember, the budget of any level, the federal government, the state government, the county government, a budget is a statement of beliefs of that community, right? It's what we prioritize, what we think we should be doing with our funds. We need to align our budget priorities with the needs of the residents, and some of that I am informed by my work as usually an overnight physician, and so many times I'm seeing patients in the emergency department, admitting them to the hospital, and at the end of the time they're with us, for whatever reason, for a heart attack, for GI bleeding, for COVID, for, et cetera, we're discharging them to the curb. 2,200 people in this community are street living homeless, and that cannot continue. So between addressing homelessness, affordable housing, and again, just generally speaking, improving the economic condition of all our residents, those are my priorities.
Thank you. Our next question is a two-part question. What do you see as the main problems at our county jail? Next part, what is your solution to the problem? What do you see as the main problems at our county jail? What is your solution to the problem? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
Excellent question. We, I think firstly, we have too many people in the jail, and that is for a variety of reasons. We can do better about that. We can do a lot better. We saw during COVID how much better we can do. We saw that numbers go from, I believe, around 1,900 down to about 1,300 people. That was everybody working together, county attorney, adult probation, the Superior Court system, working together to really make sure that we are doing everything possible to prevent a lot of people from being in a very small space together, which of course could cause for, you know, the spread of COVID. We're basically back up to the number that we were before, so we're 1,800, 1,900 folks in the jail, and 2/3 are more of the people in jail. By the way, people in jail have not been convicted of things. I mean, maybe previously, but they are there for a reason, of course, but largely they are not convicted. 2/3 are nonviolent, so we have to remember that there are a lot of folks that we don't have to actually put into a box, that we can safely monitor with ankle bracelets and much more cost-effectively and much more humanely, frankly. So the biggest problem, I think, in the jail is that we just have too many people in it, and we don't have to have that many people in it.
Thank you. John Backer.
So fortunately, I don't know a tremendous amount about the jail because I've never spent any time there, but the jail has been known to have some structural situations going on for lack of maintenance. There's been talk of building a new jail. There was a Blue Ribbon Commission task with making a recommendation on that, but I think aside from that Blue Ribbon Commission, we should have structural engineers, contractors come in and tell us which the better course is. Do we need a new jail, or can we fix the issues physically with the jail? Aside from that, I think it's dangerous to try to measure the level of success by trying to minimize the people in jail. Certainly, the people that need to be in jail are violent offenders potentially, and the judges are best equipped to figure out who should spend time in jail. Some might be flight risk, some might be a danger to the community. So we need to be mindful of that for sure, but the jail population is what the jail population needs to be from the equal application of the laws we have on the books and the corresponding punishments that have been dictated. There is range of those. And then, solution to the problem, I kind of included in my original answer, you know, checking out the condition of the jail and seeing if we need a new jail or not, and then make sure we consistently apply the law.
Thank you. Our next question, what is the county's role in lowering the poverty rate in Pima County? What is the county's role in lowering the rate, the poverty rate in Pima County? We'll begin with John Backer.
So the county developed a poverty initiative, 13 principles. There's not a lot of details behind it just yet, but I applaud the desire to attack this poverty problem, but with there not being a lot of meat behind those issues. I have to tell you, I believe that the cure for poverty is opportunity, and this county has long not provided much opportunity to our residents. We have people graduating from U of A and other educational institutions and moving away because they can't find jobs. Sure, we've got Raytheon, we used to have IBM and bigger numbers, and we've got, you know, medical, you know, careers here and so forth, but we need to attract other businesses. We had a tremendous number of call centers, but we need to attract the types of businesses that can provide a living wage. 20% of our residents live in poverty, and that's not acceptable. Some people think that maybe we need to go after resolving problems for a certain race or religion or creed, some artificial separation of our community, but I think the key is, regardless of all those other things, trying to help the people that live in poverty across the board.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
And I have to say, the Prosperity Initiative, which we're talking about a little bit here, that 13-point program, is now the law of the county. I was proud to vote for it, and that is, again, there are, you know, we're still working things out, but basically every single action, everything that county staff, county departments do, is in that context, and that is how we are asking them, well, really demanding, that they frame everything. Within the Prosperity Initiative, what is this, how are we going to disrupt generational poverty? How will, whatever item you're working on, to present to the board, to present to the county administrator, how will this work to do one of these 13 major provisions? And that's incredibly important. Look, it's central, like Constitution and the statute vest us with the obligation to do what we can to improve the economic conditions of our residents and their families, right? So, and in District Two, we have some pretty impressive things going on. Mosaic Quarter, very large development happening in the middle of the district, and that is going to create not only hundreds of jobs just to develop the entire project over several years, but ongoing hundreds of jobs beyond that. And American Battery Factory, also hundreds of jobs, high-tech jobs coming right to also a part of District Two. So those are all facilitated by Pima County.
Thank you. Our next question, what is the Pima County Transportation Improvement Program? What is the Pima County Transportation Improvement Program? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
That is an excellent question, and I will have to tell you that I have staff specifically dedicated to, dedicated to not only, well, just broadly to transportation, to monitoring what's going on with the Regional Transportation Authority as well, which is like about 2/3 of all the funding that we have coming to Southern Arizona and the Pima County area to address roads, transit. And, look, Pima County, I have to say, has done a pretty good job of actually accelerating road improvements. We're not hearing nearly as much as we once did in terms of complaints about road quality, in part due to one of my colleagues, Supervisor Rex Scott, who pushed for us to invest additional money into roads at an accelerated rate, which I also supported. And, look, we have more that we need to do, obviously, but I think we're making quite a dent on the transportation side, and it's important not only to just spend $150 million plus dollars in an accelerated fashion on potholes and roads and recovering and refurbishing roads, but also to understand that there are a lot of people without roofs. So we have to balance what we do on transportation and roads and transit with reminding ourselves that there are still people in our community that don't have anywhere to live or sleep.
Thank you. John Backer.
So the transportation program here in Pima County, currently, the staff of Pima County Transportation Department, to the tune of about 96, 97% are paid, their salaries are paid by HERF and VLT funds, the Highway User Fund and the Vehicle License Tax that the state provides us to maintain our roads. I feel strongly that that money should go to maintain the roads, and the payment of any departments within Pima County should come out of the general fund. The RTA, Regional Transportation Authority, has that half-cent sales tax that's been going on for several years. It's going to be up for a vote, I believe, the spring of this coming year, and they're talking about extending that half-cent sales tax beyond when it originally ends, and there's some things to be mindful of. The best predictor of the future is what's happened in the past, and what's happened in the past is there's been lacking in the contingency funding of these projects, and additional tax dollars needed to cover that gap. So we need to be more mindful of the contingency funds for these big projects. Also, the RTA not just focuses on roads, but multimodal transportation, which is also an important part of it, and also the RTA applying across the entire region takes the risk of maybe some areas not being served as well as others, which is also a potential problem.
Thank you. Our next question, what are the three biggest issues facing the county, and what will you do to address them? What are the three biggest issues facing the county, and what will you do to address them? We'll begin with John Backer.
So that's a great question. As I said, I believe the sacred responsibility of all levels of government, first and foremost, is public safety, roads and infrastructure, and parks and recreation. Certainly, there's more beyond that, but some things that you might think aren't included in that are included in that. And what I would do to help with public safety is, you know, we've got a county attorney who I don't necessarily agree with some of the ways she's running her office, but we need to bring light to the people of Pima County to understand, we need to prosecute criminals that are interfering with our citizens' lives. There's victims out there that are being left without any resolution to problems put on their families, so we need to address that. The roads, we need to do what I said in the previous answer, use the HERF and VLT to maintain the roads, RTA potentially to expand our road system and multimodal transportation, and then the parks and rec, it ties in with public safety to a point, because if we have those three pillars, we'll be the type of community that residents are happy with and businesses are happy with, and additionally, attract other businesses here because those things are solid. Those parks have to feel safe and clean for our families where they'll want to be used.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
So I would, I mean, there are multiple problems. I'd say the top three, kind of related, would be a lack of housing, generally a lack of housing, especially a lack of affordable housing. In terms of what the county is doing to address that, for two budget cycles in a row, we've invested $5 million, more than, actually, $11 million total now, in gap funding for projects to help to address that. The county is not going to be the only solution. The city of Tucson is part of the equation as well, and of course, funding from other sources is incredibly important, but for every dollar that Pima County has spent on this, it's $38 to $1 from Pima County in terms of how we can invest and really take, leverage third parties, private funds, state funds, and federal funds to help address that. And we've increased the number over the past two budget cycles of available housing units, many of these affordable housing units, by 1,000. That is not 40,000, which is what we probably lack and still need in that range, but it certainly makes, it certainly helps a lot. I will go back to homelessness. For the first time ever, we have, in the county, we have kind of aligned things, and we actually have a specific office and subsection of Pima County addressing this, housing and homelessness, and that's one of the best ways to get the, address this. And then poverty, we passed the Prosperity Initiative, and I think one of the best ways to get at, you know, generational poverty is to start education early, and that's fine.
Thank you. Our next question, how would you balance the need to fight climate change with the need to have a growing and robust economy? How would you balance the need to fight climate change with the need to have a growing and robust economy? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
Another excellent question, and these kind of go hand in glove, as far as I'm concerned. You have, this is an area of the country where we are very well aware of what climate change can do. We don't get a heck of a lot of water, though this monsoon season has been pretty great. Still seems to be going on, which is nice. We have a lot of solar energy hitting Arizona, and now because of the cost of materials coming down and the engineering and the tech side of things getting better and more efficient, we can really see how, you know, some of the jobs in putting up, depending on where we are, wind farms, right, putting photovoltaics and other forms of solar energy, these bring excellent, well-paying jobs to the area, and there are only certain areas where we can do this stuff. So, and of course, doing everything we can to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels is a win and a win. And then being just very conscientious of what we are doing at the county level in terms of... in terms of, you know, just how we are behaving at the county, you know? We, we have made that a priority at the county, within the government itself, to ensure that we're doing everything that we can possibly do to respect and understand the environmental consequences of the actions that we take. And that's something that I do every day when we're looking, looking at various items to approve or development requests. So I think all of these things go together, and you can definitely have robust economic growth as a direct result of being environmentally conscious.
Thank you. John Backer.
You know, the environment is really important. I remember back to my time as a cub master. I remember when we'd go camping with the kids. At an early age, we told them, you know, we leave those campsites better than we found them. We don't want to be careless with our environment. At the same time, we have to recognize there's economic realities we, we can't ignore. Climate change, if it's, if it's based on CO2 emissions, the United States puts out about 14% of the world's CO2 per year. China puts out 30%. So we need to set a proper guidepost on us to not be careless with our environment, but also understand we can do everything in the world and, and run ourselves into oblivion economically, but still won't change the situation by ourselves. We need to have things make economic sense. And there's some great things out there, like hybrid vehicles, I think are great, because if you try to go 100% electric and you can't get to a charging station or something, that's a potential problem. But with hybrid, you still have that alternative and have that range. Another thing that doesn't put out as much energy, from what I understand, but hydrogen. Because hydrogen, when you burn it in a vehicle, the only exhaust is water. So I think that's how I would balance them.
Thank you. Next question. How can the county better address homeless and also address the housing shortage? How can the county better address the homeless and address the housing shortage? We'll begin with John Backer.
That's a tough couple of points to cover in a short amount of time, but I'll do the best I can. Homelessness, reportedly 10% of the people who are homeless are the ones who are willing and able to, to potentially get help. The other 90% are largely addicted to drugs and don't want help. They want to just be left alone. So, but there's nothing civil, nothing coming from a, a good place about leaving those people out in the elements the way they are. Even if they don't think they want help, I think the way we could help those people who don't believe they want help is to enforce our laws. And if, if they break a law, you know, take appropriate action, but give them a choice between going down a recovery route and spending some time in jail. Either way, they're, they're taken out of that environment and potentially helped. Housing shortage is tough, because I'm also a realtor, and the cost of housing is astronomical, cost of interest is, is double what it once was. And my time in Habitat tells me that maybe there's some opportunities to leverage something like Habitat, something like tiny homes, to, and change our zoning ordinances to, to allow for smaller homes, to help at least alleviate some of the problem. But it's a big topic to cover in just a few seconds, so, thank you.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
Yeah, we've, we've talked about this, actually, several times already. So, look, homelessness, we can do some, we can do better. And, look, every patient that I've seen at my hospital who's been homeless, and we usually talk about it, they all would like to not be homeless. I, I don't know about 10%, but it, they, they don't want to be homeless. They don't always, because they have been through programs that have maybe not been successful for them, they are wary sometimes about accepting other referrals or other, other help, but they definitely don't want to be homeless. So I believe that the best option is, and Pima County has seen some, some really great benefits from this, is low, low barrier, housing first. So, okay, you're stuck on meth, you're stuck on fentanyl, no judgment, here's a key, you can put your stuff in this space, and now you're going to go to a program for 30 days and get clean, and your stuff will still be there. They don't have that right now. And so that is incredibly helpful, and that sort of model, that philosophy of housing and helping those who are homeless is incredibly, I think, beneficial. And Pima County has done a pilot program to, to demonstrate that. Also, we were able to, during COVID pass, from my office, actually, emergency eviction legal services to help prevent people from becoming homeless due to eviction, which has helped, I think, over 1,500 people now. And I have talked a lot about what I think we should do in terms of affordable housing, and perhaps later we'll have the opportunity to talk more, because my time is now up, so.
Thank you. Okay, our next question, sort of gives you an opportunity to use your imagination. If you had a $10 million bonus in the county, how would you spend it? If you had a $10 million bonus in the county, how would you spend it? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
I think he will not be surprised at my answer, and that will be to, to maximize, leverage the heck out of that and maximize, maximize programs and, and opportunities to, to do everything possible to reduce our street living homeless population for at least half of those funds. And then another, the other half, invest into additional gap funding programs to assist with additional housing opportunities and options. Look, I mean, the housing, the housing crisis is across, it's, it's a suspect, and we need a diversity of housing. We don't just need single-family dwellings. That's kind of how our code, that's how our zoning laws work. And they're kind of a mess, because everything is just like, okay, a house next to another house, next to another house. That is not what we, as a community, need. A lot of people do need rental opportunities, not high-end, super-luxury ones sometimes, sometimes like entry-level ones, Section 8, et cetera, so we, uptown homes. There are lots of different housing options. And one major step in addressing that is, of course, to, to change around how the zoning laws work. So I would say, yes, working on, investing those funds equally between reducing our street living homeless population, and then working on increasing the, the number of housing options, the diversity of housing options, and reducing barriers such as restrictive zoning laws and ordinances that prevent those who would be interested in actually doing those things from doing so.
Thank you. John Backer.
So, assuming that the budget that we would be working with is covering all the, the priorities we set as a county, and understanding that our people are really struggling now, especially those on fixed incomes, I would be inclined to give that money back to our taxpayers to help them in this troubling economic time we're finding ourselves in. The tax rate gets advertised as being the same or slightly changing and adding just a little bit to a bill, but $10 or $20 per month or whatever can mean the difference between someone getting the medication they need and being able to eat. So I think we owe it to our taxpayers, if we find ourselves with a surplus, let's give the money back to the people who it belongs to, the people of Pima County.
Thank you. Next question. As a county supervisor, how would you address the fentanyl crisis? As a county supervisor, how would you address the fentanyl crisis? We'll begin with John Backer.
Well, the fentanyl crisis has certainly touched far too many people in our country. It has to be a layered approach. First, it's not totally within our control to cut the flow out, out at the, the border, but try to work with the federal government to do so. Because if we can limit the supply coming in, that will be one possibility to help. Secondly, we need to have programs in place to help people move away from using those drugs when they're in those situations. And then, thirdly, we need enforcement. Right now, people can go out on Tucson streets and buy a fentanyl pill for 50 cents. In the work I was doing with law enforcement, I would travel the country, go into conferences, and I was told by people from other states that Tucson is known for fentanyl tourism. People come here in part because fentanyl is cheap, it's readily available, and they don't feel they're going to be prosecuted. It, it's a loving act to take someone off the street and, and put, incarcerate them for their own good. It's some tough love that could save their lives. So I think those three aspects would, would be what I would focus on.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
Yeah, I, I see the results of the fentanyl crisis and what it does to families in our community, because I see patients, almost every night I'm in the hospital, and it's heartbreaking. Sometimes it's a dozen or sometimes 15 admissions I'm, I'm getting, taken care of. And any given night, I have, at one point even had more than half of them who were either actively struggling with an addiction, usually fentanyl or some narcotic. It's at least one or two that have had that history or are actively suffering. And those numbers have gone up in the 20 years I've been here, 18, almost 18 years in, in practice in this hospital, and it's, it's noticeable. So I, I think it's incredibly important to, to, yes, of course, interdiction at the board, that's federal and, and state, and, you know, working with the authorities to do what we can to reduce these coming into our community and finding, you know, addressing the issues with the, the dealers and prosecuting them to the extent of the law that allows. But on the, on the end-user side of things, on the, on my patients, making sure to always address this as what it is, that's an addiction, that's a disease, and they shouldn't be, you know, disrespected or treated in any differently if they were, than if they were perhaps having a heart attack or a stroke or some other infection. And addressing it with the compassion as necessary and affording them the opportunity to get clean and supporting them through that process. And that's something that I know that Dr. Cullen, who is our excellent Admiral Cullen, actually, is, is focused on as well.
Thank you. John Backer.
Now, did you repeat the question? I, I think I answered it already.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now points four, five, and six, please.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question. Do you think Arizona elections are fair and equitable? How would you improve them? Do you think Arizona's elections are fair and equitable? How would you improve them? And we'll begin with Matt Heinz.
I'm, I'm pretty convinced at this point that we have the most secure and safest elections, not just in Arizona, but across the country, than we've really ever had. So I'm, I'm, I mean, in Pima County especially, since, I can't remember the year, but we've had, literally, on, on the stacks of early ballots, there's like a 24-severen, like, you can, you can literally go and find where your ballot is and what, what pile it's sitting in. That, that's been something that we've been doing in this county for like, what, 12 years? 15 years? So in terms of transparency, in terms of ballot security and chain of custody, all that, I, I have no concerns. The county supervisors are tasked with, of course, overseeing the elections through the division of elections. And we have excellent staff in charge of that department, and I have, I have complete and total faith in them. And, look, we've seen this year after year. Like, sometimes it takes a little while to, to count everything, because so many people send their ballot, drop off early ballots on the election day, and those have to be verified, and it can take a few days. And especially in places like Maricopa and Pima Counties, because we're pretty big. But, you know, I'm, I, I am confident that the elections are secure, and I, that the only thing I could say I would like to improve is a, a reduction in, in rhetoric, mostly from federal and state candidates, but a reduction in rhetoric that, that just vilifies and demonizes these amazing, hard-working county employees who are doing this important work.
Thank you. John Backer.
From my 30 years in technology, a, a big part of that was, you know, processes and systems, not just technology, but the flow of how information works. If, if there is any possibility in the line that something could be, you know, taken the wrong direction, that's a risk. But I think by and large, we're pretty good, but there is some areas for improvement. One is the state law currently tells the, the county recorder, and I might have my words backward here, but basically that they can check death records to remove people from the roll who have passed away. But it doesn't say they have to. That, to me, doesn't make any sense. Why wouldn't you want to, to make sure that the, the voter roll is, is tied as possible and those people who've passed are no longer getting a ballot, because that ballot could end up in someone else's hands? It might take some time to find out that problem. So you've got those types of issues. Also, when, when mail-in ballots are sent out, I don't know that there's a ironclad system to track when, when ballots get returned, because people have moved or whatever. And I think there's a real opportunity to leverage all the different sources of information within the county via, you know, real estate information, you know, different sources of information to break down those silos and help vet that the information is accurate. And if a question gets raised, take the appropriate action to make sure that information's accurate.
Thank you. Our next question. How would you move the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan forward? How would you move the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan forward? We'll begin with John Backer.
So the, the Desert Conservation Plan has been going on for a while and, and has acquired a, a number of acres to keep the beauty of our area intact and keep, you know, the wildlife protected where, where it's appropriate and necessary. And I think we, we as a county could look for, for opportunities when, when land comes up for sale and, and not pay more than appraised value, as sometimes the county tends to do, but look at those as opportunities. Also, perhaps be open to taking donations of land from, from different people as their situations change through time. But it's critically important to, to keep that land, because one of the best things we have here in Pima County is the, the lands around us, the desert, the Saworos, you know, Seven Falls, just, just an endless amount of beautiful things that we want to keep that way.
Thank you. Matt Heinz.
I think one of the best things we could do is convince Carolyn Campbell to not retire, but I don't know that that's going to happen. That happened earlier today. So, and I'm not convinced she's fully retired either. Look, we, you know, preserving, acquiring, however we do it, open spaces, I completely agree, we have to keep doing that. And just remembering that, like, doing positive things for the environment is going to help all of us. You know, clean water, clean air, clean land, it's really great for, you know, children and their children, and so on and so forth. So doing what we can for the environment just helps humans continue to be able to survive in it. And from an economic standpoint, it's really a very sensible thing to do, because we benefit directly from the tourism. Having these amazing, beautiful open spaces, I mean, it, that, they, they sell themselves, right? And doing everything we can in our power to make sure that we still have these in 100 years is going to continue to help grow the economy locally and, and help us to flourish. So I think that, that has a lot to do with it. And for my part, as a county supervisor, if I am returned to this, as a custodian of this spot, I will absolutely do everything possible to ensure that development is sensible and not just happening because it supposedly has to, but in, in a way that makes, makes sense and aligns with the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan always.
Thank you. Our last question. When houseless people are moved, arrested, or otherwise detained, what is your plan for their pets? When houseless people are moved, arrested, or otherwise detained, what is your plan for their pets? We'll begin with Matt Heinz.
That is the number one question when I admit them to the hospital. I can't, I can't stay. I know it's a heart attack, doc, but I've got to go. I, like, it's, it's amazing. Hey, that's their best friend. So we, there, there actually are ways to deal with this, not just for folks who, who are suffering from homelessness, but also a lot of patients who might live alone and have a cat, a dog, several. They do the same thing. Like, don't worry about me vomiting blood on the wall and being dizzy from blood loss, it'll be fine. I've got to get home and feed, you know, feed my cat. I'm like, oh, okay. So, no, we, we truly, the PAC actually has a program at Pima Animal Care Center and others to, to help with that. And during, I think there's some weekend hours, but for sure during most of the business hours, we are able to, at least in the hospital, through our case management program, we're able to get some folks to help, to help address that and care for pets. And if we're looking at a low-barrier, housing-first model for, for addressing homelessness, then I think that, you know... then I think that, you know, one of the ways that we can, that would be part of it, right? That would take care of the problem right there. So I think having a transition center, a place, a nexus where we can have folks who are suffering from homelessness be processed and these kinds of things can be addressed, wraparound services, et cetera. So I think that that's all kind of part of the solution, but pets is a very, it's a very good question whoever asked that. That's really smart.
Thank you. John Backer.
So I'm, I'm an animal lover. My family has a couple little Yorkie brothers and they bring such joy to our family, you know, Tank and Scrappy. And they couldn't be more different, even though they're, they're brothers. People that are suffering from difficult situations, many times look to their pets. That might honestly be the only thing they're living for, is that pet. So we, we, we need to do everything we can to keep from separating those folks from their pets. In the situation where they might have issues with drugs, I think we can potentially use that situation to tell them, look, we want to help you. If you agree to go into recovery, we'll, we'll have a plan to help you keep your pet with you. But for the people who, who are not having issues with drugs and stuff, that housing first model, I think it's critically important to have the housing where some of those pets can, can come whenever possible. And if it's not possible, perhaps that PAC program could help keep their pets safe, but we have to provide them a way to visit their pets because to them, those pets are their loved ones and we, we can't separate them.
Thank you. We'll move on to closing remarks, but first I want to bring to everyone's attention that the League of Women Voters of Greater Tucson is pleased to present tonight's forum. The League is an all-volunteer, nonpartisan organization that is committed to educating and assisting the public in a nonpartisan way to understand issues and candidates. We'll give each candidate two minutes to have closing remarks and we'll begin with Matt Heinz as John Backer began the opening introduction earlier. Matt Heinz.
Well, thank you all again for being here and this conversation has been helpful for, for me, I know, the, the way that I, you know, serve my constituents, the way I, I figure out what, what kind of things to do and, and suggest to my colleagues on the board. Often those are derived from, from public or constituent comments and, and things that I hear, sometimes in the hospital, sometimes that I see in here. So these, these four are really very helpful. And I have to say, compared to my work at the federal government during the Obama administration and the Health Department, my time in the legislature, which was very, very informative, informative, this has been the most rewarding type of public service I've ever done. And I truly had no idea what county government really was, frankly, when I got elected. And certainly not when I moved here 20-plus years ago. No idea, not even quite sure that I knew that existed. And it, it's far-reaching, it can, it's so impactful for, for the families of Pima County. And I'm incredibly honored to be the county supervisor, the custodian of this seat at this time. And it's not my seat, it is ours, but I am honored to be, be serving in this role and I would be honored again to serve in the future if I am returned there by the voters and I respectfully ask for your support.
Thank you. John Backer.
I'd like to echo those thoughts. Thanks for this. This has been an awesome conversation. Really liked hearing from everyone and hopefully answering your questions. In a role such as this, sometimes partisan politics gets in the way. Rs and Ds come into play and so forth. But I'm, I'm happy to say in this district, it won't be just the Republicans or just the Democrats that determines who fills this seat. Nearly as many independents are out there, independent thinkers, as the Democrats. So it will be the independent-minded voters that will decide who fills this seat. So many of the things that separate us on the national level, those different really heartfelt issues, simply the Board of Supervisors don't have much, if any, of an impact on. I think what you want to do is, is choose a supervisor who can be your full-time supervisor because as we've learned here, there's a lot of issues we're facing as a county and, and we need due time to be put on. You know, we're facing nearly a $2 billion annual budget and it, it takes time, effort to, to do that job the right way. Not only do you go to meetings and you vote yes or no, but the pre-work has to come into play. What questions need to be asked? Thoroughly understanding the issues being faced. And then even more so than that, being out in the public, attending events, listening to the people to make sure we're, we're going the direction we need to go to. So some people might pick a candidate because they have a D by their name. I'm a Republican, but I'm happy to say my middle initial is D, so I cover all the bases for you. And so I respectfully ask for your vote. And if you want to learn more about me or my campaign, you can visit backbacker.org and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank our candidates and our audience for an outstanding forum tonight. And please remember to vote on November 5th. Thank you for attending and thank you for watching. Good night.[1779.86][1779.86]